We call the informal session of Virginia Beach City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is by Pastor Rick Cruz, Pastor of Green Run Baptist Church. Welcome, sir. After the invocation, everybody will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Father, you urge us to make entries and prayers and petitions and thanksgivings before you tonight for all men, for kings, and for all of those who are in authority, reminding us that you are sovereign, that you have ordained government, even this government, Lord, to oversee the well-being of those in this community, Lord, to serve this community in such a way that they might live a tranquil and quiet life in all dignity. So I pray, Lord, with gratitude, thanking you for each one, each man and each woman who is here tonight serving on this council. Lord, I thank you for the sacrifice that they're willing to give as they serve this community. Father, I pray that you would grant to them tonight just deep compassion, that they would have a sympathy for the community that they serve. I pray that you would grant them wisdom, that they might make just decisions in all the matter and the business that is before them. I pray, God, that you would give them just a sense of courage, that they would make just and right decisions, Lord, no matter what opposition that they may face. I pray that you would grant them to do the right thing. Lord, I pray that you would also grant them humility, Lord, to know that any good thing that they accomplish is a gift from you, Lord, that they serve those that you have put under their care. And, Lord, I pray, above all, that you would give them just a holy reverence, to know that they will give an account for the way that they serve and they care for those in this community. Father, I pray now, thanking you again for all that you're doing. I pray that you would bless this council, both the men and women who serve on it. Lord, guide this meeting tonight. May it be honoring to you. May it bring dignity and goodness to this community. And we ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Madam Clerk, you have the roll.
Yes, sir, your honor.
Thank you. May I have a certificat motion to certify the closed session?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vote's open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
May I have a motion to approve the informal and formal session minutes of September the 18th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? If not, the vote is open.
Mr. Irma, have your vote.
Aye.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have certified, you approved the minutes submitted.
Mr. Wood, would you do the add-on, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I move to add to the agenda resolution, I have the incumbent item eight resolution to authorize a $5,000 grant to Philfest USA for the fourth annual Philfest USA celebration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you've added the resolution to the agenda.
All right. We will go first, well, we will go to the bid opening that we have. It's a bid opening for the lease of city property at 1952 Maple Shade Drive. Bids for long-term ground lease pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2102. I will now summarize the bid that have been received for a proposed long-term ground lease for a portion of city-owned property for the purpose of installing, operating, and maintaining wireless communication facilities. One bid has been received as follows. Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless has bid. Five-year lease with four options to renew for five years each, maximum 25 years, at $12,000 rent for the first year with a 2.5% increase each year. Are there any other persons here desiring to submit a bid at this time? There being no further bids, the bidding is closed. City staff has evaluated the bid received from Selco Partnership and recommends that the company be granted the lease. We will now open a public hearing for the proposed long-term ground lease to operate, install, and maintain wireless communication facilities. Madam Clerk, do you have any speakers signed up for the public?
Yes, one, Barbara Messner.
Good evening.
Ms. Messner, before you start, I want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. Welcome, Ms. Messner.
Mayor Jones and counsel, you did an add-on which I think is against due process because we don't have a chance to study what you added on, a $5,000, so I would like to sign up for that when you bring it up. Is that due process?
So you want to speak on the add-on?
Right, because it wasn't on the agenda and I thought it had to be advertised, any spending. I believe it's $5,000 that you stated.
You'll be allowed to speak.
Okay, thank you. I would like to ask for a deferral on this item because it was advertised on September 16th and 23rd. It wasn't in Sunday's paper, and less than one knows to look for it. It's not listed anywhere. This is a 25-year lease for CLO doing business as Verizon. Verizon is a 130 billion company. Why are we leasing it yearly for 25, up to 25 years, for only $12,000 a year? And Ms. Henley, I believe you remember when, Ms. Henley, when the item came up about the renewal for Verizon and, or for Cox, that you recognized the fact that some of us still don't have Verizon, and also that when these contracts, when y'all charge these people, they're allowed, it's on the city's website, they're allowed to pass along what you charge them to their customers, which is us. You know, like I said, these, I've spoken on these cell towers before, this one is going on top of Dominion, a Dominion tower. So that's a high concentration of cell tower radiation. And if you look at the map, the pages 55 and 56, 56, I believe, is the map. Do you have that available for the citizens? Does anyone who's proposing this have that map available? Because it backs right up to people's homes and swimming pools, and cell towers are supposed to be at least one mile from homes, farms, and residents. So it's a public safety concern, and some of us who are directly and indirectly affected by these cell towers would like more time to discuss it. Thank you.
Then the next item in public hearing is on charter amendments.
Shouldn't we have a vote?
You have a question, Mr. Moss?
Do we make a vote on that?
I just want to-
Not yet.
Not yet. It's on the agenda. You'll deal with it. I just want to abstain on that item. That's all I'm sure people remember.
All right. Charter amendments. Item 2A, this limitation upon issuance of debt not authorized by the city charter. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Martin Joseph, and after Mr. Joseph, the next speaker will be Chris
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Jones, members of the City Council, and manager, City Manager Hanson. I'm coming before you this evening representing the position of the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce in opposition to the proposed charter limitation regarding the issuance of public facility revenue bonds. Should the city of Virginia Beach restrict or eliminate the bonding authority of the Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority, we would be limiting our city's ability to compete for private investment, jobs, and tax revenues. Presently, over 50% of the office and industrial land developed in the city of Virginia Beach is directly attributable to the city of Virginia Beach Development Authority. What exactly are we trying to fix? Virginia Beach is a AAA bond-rated city with a very conservative financial policies for investments. The city is closely monitored by all three rating agencies on Wall Street. The initiative to eliminate public facility revenue bond would stymie economic progress in our city. The elimination of the Development Authority's ability to promote and accomplish transformative projects would take away a competitive edge in both tourism and jobs growth here in Hampton Roads. We must have the financial capability to create and realize transformative projects like Town Center, the Amphitheater, Sandler Center, the Housing Resource Center, and the new Sports Center under construction near the Convention Center. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, I urge you not to support this proposed charter change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Stone, and after Mr. Stone would be Jeannie Evans-Cox.
Good evening. I'm your local registered lobbyist. I did spend today in Richmond. It was, it's been interesting, and certainly the 2019 General Assembly is going to be an interesting time, I think, for the Commonwealth and for Virginia. So I am also here after Martin to represent the Virginia Beach Chamber, speaking in opposition to this for eliminating the Development Authority's ability to issue public facility revenue bonds. Consider this: Virginia has, Virginia Beach has the lowest real estate and personal property tax rate in Hampton Roads. Of all the taxes and fees, the stormwater fee is the only one which is the highest. Wisely, Virginia Beach decided to invest $316 million over the next 15 years in major stormwater infrastructure projects, and the stormwater fee reflects this investment. Economic development and the Development Authority are no different, and both are equally important investments in the city's future. The Development Authority and their ability to issue bonds is a critical component that drives economic growth, assists companies that create jobs, and strives to diversify the city's economy. While tourism and the military certainly play an important role in creating jobs, the Development Authority helps grow other industries like life sciences, healthcare, biotechnology, advanced manufacturing, business services, internet technologies, and cybersecurity, creating high-paying jobs and sustaining and improved quality of life for all of our residents. The Development Authority brings new companies while retaining and strengthening our existing companies, increasing the city's tax revenue for communities, for our community and critically needed infrastructure projects. Even the Supreme Court of Virginia has ruled that a Development Authority constitutes a proper function of government, and that it does not circumvent the city's charter, nor does it breach the covenant, as has been implied. The Chamber believes that the Development Authority plays a vital role promoting economic development, and that the city manages its debt through conservative debt policies and maintains its rating. Furthermore, two representatives from the City Council sit on the Development Board, and all meetings are open to the public. So do we need, or do we even want to ask permission of the General Assembly on how to manage our city? I think the answer is no, and the Chamber opposes any notion of limiting our ability to invest in our future and opposes item number 20 on your legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jeannie Evans-Cox, and after Mrs. Cox will be Tim Wurst.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Wood, members of City Council. My name is Jeannie Evans-Cox, and I'm the Executive Director of the Central Business District Association. I'm here tonight representing our CBDA President, Mark Slaughter, our Board of Directors, and our 161-member CBDA companies. When I went to school, earning an A was really a good thing. A AAA would have been absolutely amazing, even for me. I commend you, each one of you, as the leaders of this city for achieving that goal. A AAA bond rating is more than amazing. It's absolutely spectacular. The use of public facility revenue bonds is the way in which we stay competitive, not only right here in Hampton Roads, but nationwide and even worldwide. Without it, Virginia Beach can't grow. We can't compete, we'll lose our credibility and our competitive edge, and we'll hinder our capability to market our assets and opportunities to broaden our audience. Tourism, roads, schools, public facilities, economic development, and vitality, they're all very, very important components to a successful city and a healthy economic environment, and each one of you knows that. The Sandler Center, the Amphitheater, our beautiful new Sports Center, Housing Resource Center, Town Center, the Dome Site, and more would never and could never be built. They are all revenue generators for our city. We have a beautiful, God-given beach for families to enjoy. Reducing our funding and investment capabilities would hurt our ocean fund businesses and put them at risk. We might as well just shut the gate and throw away the key. Without economic development, we become a dying city. Your vision for our city is a good one. It's always been a good one. Don't allow this short-sighted proposal to affect our city. Keep moving forward with your vision. An A is a good thing. A AAA is even better. That old adage that rings true through all the years, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it, and it's not broke." Thank you for your excellent and your conservative management of our public debt.
Sir, I was just advised, Mr. Wurst is not here yet. He's on his way, so I'll just go to the next speaker, Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner will be Mrs. Marsh.
I didn't know we were allowed to wait for people if they aren't here. Mr. Moss. I keep going back to you. I just saw your sign, "Somebody we can trust." I certainly hope so. We used to. You know, the Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority is appointed by council, including Mr. Wood, your family member. Like to know who's going to abstain, but we have, we cannot continue the Economic Development Authority. It's a Ponzi scheme. It's debt. It's the debt arm of the city, and most of us are tired of it. You can't find money for public safety? How many of y'all watch the news? Or, Mr. Jones, read, or Ms. Henley, do you look at the beacon, the list of crimes, the serious crimes? Crime spreads. If you don't take the cops away from the oceanfront events every weekend and put them patrolling the neighborhoods, we're going to have more and more serious crimes. You have to get rid of it. You can't just keep moving it. Okay, corporate welfare. The state, who funds a lot of these things that these lobbyists, special interests, want, the state had $6 billion debt, and a lot of it is from subsidizing these private corporations. The city has close to $3 billion debt. There's no real jobs. It's based on the average. The top person could make $20 million, the person on the bottom could make $2 an hour, especially some of the slave labor around here. So, yeah, I'm a little ticked. It's been too many years that I've watched this, the debt grow, and you've switched from supermajority votes to capital improvement projects. Yeah, the only thing these, Ms. Cox and these other people are worried about that will go away is the cash cow. I oppose corporate welfare for anything, especially using taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Mrs. Marsh, and after Mrs. Marsh will be Diana Howard.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Councilman Moss. Thank you for proposing this amendment, which follows the spirit of what the charter tried to do to help citizens in 1962. I am opposed to the corporate welfare because we are $2.5 billion on the hook for citizens. Everyone needs to know, it's $2.5 billion. So wrap your arms around that. It's in two parts. It's in the bonds, which are at about $1.2 billion, and it's in the unfunded pension liabilities, which has thankfully gone down just a bit, thankfully, but we're still looking at a number north of $1.1 billion. So when you look at these numbers and you add them up, and Patty should have these online, these charts should be online for every citizen and every taxpayer to see. I shouldn't have to go to meetings and ask repeatedly to get the basic information. This should be something, we should all know what our debt is. And it's really disappointing because I came before you, and I mentioned, when you had your budget meetings, that the means of financing was the PFRB bonds. Of all the program costs that were put through the city budget, and this is page 327 of the CIP that was handed out, $147,255 and change was programmed from the PFRB bonds. Notice, tourism investment program was not providing anything. You're funding things like the sports complex. You found $68 million for that. It's amazing how that number is right there, 68 million. You found that 68 million, but I, as a taxpayer, didn't get to vote on it. You keep putting through all these luxuries, but you don't fund the basics. Do you remember your $55 million for your brand-new city hall? I don't know if anyone here wanted a brand-new city hall, but you've got that. You build in all these expenses, but we're financially constricted, and you have a budget manager who builds in 2% increases all the time, every year, to everything. So you are breaking the backs of the citizens to help the few businesses you choose to help. You don't help all the businesses. It's a cronyism. You help a few select businesses. May I just mention the words "Green Flash"? If none of you are aware of Green Flash, why don't you look at who on the VBDA was involved with Green Flash? We have somebody running who is involved with that person. They happen to be married to a person who works for the Green Flash, building owner. We have too much cronyism, and we're not spending our money wisely. We do, we need to follow through and put through this amendment that Mr. Moss, Ms. Abbott went forth. Thank you.
Diana Howard, and after Mrs. Howard, this is Virginia Wasserberg.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I actually thought I was coming here to speak on the legislative agenda. I didn't know it was going to be separated like this. So this is one of the things I was going to speak on, so I just have a short thing on it. I just wanted you to stop circumventing the city charter and running up all our debt through the VBDA, and I support John Moss's legislation, so. And I couldn't have said it better than everybody else, and I can see the Chamber of Commerce being against it because they should be looking for businesses that want to fund themselves, not ask us taxpayers to be paying off all this debt. And what makes you think that if you had a referendum, that maybe we wouldn't want a sports center, or, you know, a wave pool, or the Sandler Center? You know, it's our money. We should get to vote on whether or not we want to be in debt to spend it. And stormwater, we have to wait 15 years to get all that taken care of, you know, so maybe they would have to take a long time to get taken care of, too. So some of the other things I wanted to talk about, COPN, Certificate of Public Need. Now, why should a medical facility have to, you know, get a certificate of public need to get an MRI or do some sort of procedure and have to get permission so they don't compete with a hospital? Now, the argument used to be that hospitals have to accept everybody, whether they have insurance or not. But now that we've expanded Medicaid, there's no excuse anymore. Let the free market work so that we can lower the cost to all of us, because this is ridiculous. Regional greenhouse gas, now they put coastal flooding in front of it, but it doesn't do anything for fixing coastal flooding. This is nothing but a cap-and-trade bill. You arbitrarily lower the CO2 rate, so company can't meet it, so they buy carbon credits from somebody that doesn't, has extra, so a third company gets to sell it and make money, and you get a kickback, and we get higher energy costs, right? And didn't we just allow the biggest energy company, there's a monopoly in Virginia, to go five years without, you know, SEC oversight? We need that. About the internet tax? Hmm. Bringing taxing into the 21st century, taxing online gaming, streaming, taxing, really? Remember the Beatles song, "The Taxman"? Remember that? "Drive a car, we'll tax the street. Take a walk, we'll tax your feet." We can add, "If you like to talk, we'll tax your tweet."
Virginia Wasserberg, and after Mrs. Wasserberg will be Mike Muskel.
Good evening. I come to you tonight not as a CEO, not as a business owner, but as a mom, as a wife, a mother of two, and as the leader of Stop the Flooding Now, which over the past 28 days has reached over 38,000 people. On April 25th, 2017, at a City Council workshop, City Manager Dave Hanson took down the Moss-Abbott budget proposal that funded flooding faster. Mr. Hanson provided a chart that proved that the proposed budget, quote, I quote him, "stays within the metrics we have, but gives up all other projects. It gives up the economic incentives, except for the biomedical." He said, quote, "I think you acknowledge the risk we take in the bond market by giving up our ability to provide economic incentives to incentivize growth of our city." Mr. Hanson used this scare tactic to convince the majority of our council to not support that budget that funded flooding in my neighborhood of Windsor Woods and Princess Anne Plaza in five to seven years, but scared them into voting for his budget that doesn't break ground on that flood mitigation until the out-years of his 15-year mitigation plan. If this council would request the General Assembly to amend the city charter, not to ask them to tell us how to run our city, but to amend it to require that debts issued directly by our city by a third party requires either a public referendum or a supermajority vote for approval, we may not ever have to run into this problem of debt and AAA bond rating again when our city desperately needs the funds for its aging infrastructure. And over the past 20 years, the VBDA has issued over $600 million in debt, which is a price tag that the Public Works Department has presented this council in the past, telling them that it would fund our stormwater needs citywide. If you, as a council, truly backs the cause of funding flooding faster, if you truly back establishing the Hurricane and Flooding Risk Reduction and Bond Rating Protection Act of 2019, then you will support this legislation item. You will support funding flooding. You will send a clear message to the voting public that you do support that, and I ask that you support this charter amendment. Thank you.
Mike Muskel, and after Mr. Muskel will be Tim Wurst.
Evening. John Adams called ours a government of laws and not of men. And what that means is that the authority of the people in charge flows from the laws that we have passed and written down through our democratic processes, and those in charge can't just ignore the processes that we put down in the law, even if they have a very good idea. ignore the processes that we put down in the law, even if they have a very good idea that would require doing so. In this case, our city charter, which is a state law passed according to the Constitution of Virginia and deriving its authority from that, sets out procedures for how we issue debt in our city's name, to which we're required to have a referendum to issue more than $10 million in debt. Yet routinely, we issue far more debt than this through an unelected authority without going through the referendum requirement. And it's justified legally through a bunch of tricks of contract wording, essentially, rather than anything that has anything to do with a basis in actual statutes that have been democratically passed. This process guarantees us, according to state law and the Virginia Constitution, guarantees all of us the right to have a certain amount of input at a certain stage in the process. And it's not the right of the city to duck this debate, which obviously there is a debate to be had about the issue of debt. If there is a reason that the procedure needs to be changed, if the limit needs to be increased, or if we need to change the, you know, the way that debt is issued, then we need to follow the established democratic practices to amend the city charter to do so. But it's not the right of the city council or the development authority to simply make an end run around those requirements or the spirit of them. So for those reasons, I urge the city council to vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Wurst. I live in the Princess Anne District. Just wanted to make a couple of comments on using the city charter, and I'm here to speak and ask that we do use the city charter. Let's not use the VBDA where we have chosen people, the chosen ones. We have two people on our VBDA that are members of Town Bank. Why not just have one person with Town Bank and somebody else so we can have more representation from the city? Why can't we include a second bank, maybe? Have a little competition with bids and going after loans. If we ask the people about spending $50 million on a city hall, we might get a different answer. If we ask people about spending $68 million on a sports center, we might get a different answer. I'm asking, and I'm standing here to ask that you please amend our city charter. The good news is, is that I'm a positive guy. I'm a guy who's, usually the glass is half-full. But the bad news is, I've been to too many of these meetings where we stand up here and talk, and you guys don't look at us or pay attention or seem to care what we're saying. And then you wait five seconds, you make a nomination, or you make a proposal, somebody seconds it, and then everything that you've just heard just goes by the wayside. I'm asking you to do something different tonight. Listen, take our pleas for help here and amend this city charter. Thank you.
That's all the speakers I have signed up for 2A.
Do you have any for 2B?
Yes.
Which is a single-member district or ward system election?
Yes. First speaker is David Nygaard. And after Mr. Nygaard will be Josh Schulman.
Thank you for the opportunity to have a few words regarding the charter change in favor of district voting. I applaud and appreciate the efforts of Councilwoman Abbott and Councilman Moss on this matter, and I think it's a step in the right direction. Two weeks ago, I filed paperwork to begin collecting signatures to place this same question on the ballot in a non-binding referendum so that the people of Virginia Beach will have an opportunity to express their will on this matter. Now, growing up here in Virginia Beach, I always was confused about how our city council races were handled. When I first started voting, I remember scratching my head in the voting booth, wondering if I was allowed to vote for districts where I didn't live. And I would agonize if I was allowed to vote for someone in Rose Hall. Average voters cannot possibly become familiar with so many candidates, and candidates cannot possibly raise enough grassroots money to reach almost a half a million citizens. It's bad for democracy, and it's bad for our city. The point of local government is that it's to be local. In our case, one would think that that would be clustered civic leagues and neighborhoods, but it's not in our city. Representative democracy looks like voting for who represents your area. We aren't asking Lynchburg to elect our next congressman. We don't get to vote on the senator for California. People in their districts deserve the opportunity to vote for the people who represent them. It begs for special interests to have outside say over the direction of our city. Moreover, the current system dilutes the votes of minority voters. This is your chance to do the right thing, so that the people of Virginia Beach do not have to do this for you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Josh Schulman. And after Mr. Schulman will be Tim Wurst.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you. My name is Josh Schulman. I'm a resident of our city's Princess Anne District, and I'm here to tell you why I think single-member district voting is not in our city's best interest. And certainly, there are some good arguments on both sides of this issue, but I think we should be mindful that sometimes well-intentioned ideas also have unintended consequences. Let me be clear. Making it easier for people to run for public office is a good thing. Single-member district voting would likely make campaigning less expensive because candidates could focus their time and resources on voters in their own districts. It's also been said that council members would be more attuned to the specific needs and interests of their own districts. On the surface, that does sound appealing, although I'm sure many of you would take issue with the notion that you aren't in touch with your constituents or attuned to your issues in your districts. I know you all work hard to know and represent your districts well. My own perspective is that at-large voting encourages candidates for public office to familiarize themselves with issues affecting our entire community, not just those in their own backyard. We have the largest city in the Commonwealth, and we have to keep thinking big. I haven't read a single vision statement or long-range plan for our city that calls for us to become more divisive, more factional, or more parochial. Indeed, ours is a vision of a connected community, where our citizens engage with one another and are informed about the many challenging issues that we're confronted with. At-large voting also makes our elected officials more accessible and more accountable. I think it's a good thing that candidates for office campaign outside of their district. It gets them in front of more people, exposes them to even more viewpoints and perspectives. It also gets more citizens engaged in citywide issues and helps familiarize them with our elected leaders in turn. The issues we face are big, and they don't know any district boundaries. Focusing on our differences only serves to widen the gaps between us, and that's why I respectfully urge you to keep our at-large voting system just the way it is. Thank you.
Tim Wurst. And after Mr. Wurst will be Barbara Messner.
I don't need to state my name again, do I? I'm here to ask that we go to a district voting. I can't imagine the last six months, eight months of campaigning that I've done from the Newtown Road area all the way to Blackwater. If we were able to campaign in our own district, imagine how many more doors you could knock on, how many more people you would meet and be able to talk to personally and get to know that person than having to spread yourself out among our city. It shouldn't have to cost $100,000 to run for city council. It shouldn't cost $400,000 to run for mayor. We're just running for mayor. We're just running for city council. It shouldn't cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to do so. I think the people win when you go to a district voting because you are staying within your district. Thank you.
Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Mrs. Marsh.
Good evening. The at-large in the ward system, I don't agree that you should be able to cater. I mean, most of the signs for people running in their district are, like Centerville, when you ran, you can cater to your district. The council members and the legislators, they run in districts, and yet they vote, they spend money for everyone. So I am for the at-large system for everyone, and we need to get the money out of the elections. We need to get the conflicts of interest out of the city. I don't think people are confused about who to vote for. They're just confused about not having really great choices. Mr. Wurst mentioned keeping Town Bank. Maybe he forgot that Ms. Wilson, Mr. Wood, and Mr. Davenport have direct conflicts with Town Bank. As long as there's anyone, Sesam's may be gone, but anyone with a conflict, Mr. Ross, you brought it up before, Mr. Dyer, you didn't second it, to remove the money when Sesam's conflict was proven. Mr. Davenport has worked as a broker for Prudential Town Realty. He's the founding chair of Virginia Gentleman, Bruce Thompson's Foundation. Ms. Wilson, I didn't hear why she wasn't here today. Her statement of economic interest, she's received over $250,000 in services for the CPA firm, from the stock from Goodman Dixon Hughes, including CPA work for Town Bank. Mr. Wood, your conflicts are unbelievable. My God. I hope one of those two people wins, even though I'm not supposed to be picking anybody. The person who mentioned referendums, referendums are non-binding. It's no different than coming here, asking questions, and pleading with y'all to quit wasting your money. It makes a lot of money when you run ads and everything, but it's non-binding, and it depends on who's running and when they're running, whether or not y'all listen to residents. Thank you.
Mrs. Marsh. And after Mrs. Marsh is Diana Howard.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. I am very much in favor of district voting and changing it to be the way Councilmember Moss and Abbott have put forth. I feel my representation could be much better. I went to the state legislature yesterday. I went to the Joint Subcommittee on Coastal Flooding. They've had two meetings this year, and our representative that you have selected, our citizen representative, is none other than Councilmember Wood. He is listed on the agenda, but Mr. Wood did not show up yesterday. Mr. Wood also did not show up for the June 20, 2018 meeting. He did not show up for the June 20, 2017 meeting, the January 20, 2017 meeting, the May 12, 2015 meeting. He was missing from all those meetings. I've given this to all of you because I would think that all of you who are running for election know that flooding is one of our priorities, and we did not have representation there. We had people there who were very involved in networking and talking to us. We had Kyle Spencer, the Deputy Resiliency Officer of the City of Norfolk, and the City of Norfolk is one of the top cities in the country, leading the charge to improve their situation. Virginia Beach was not mentioned. We got an update on the flood defense access roads by the American Flood Coalition. They did a great job talking about that. We also got an update from Colonel Kinsman, the 59th Commander of the Norfolk Army Corps of Engineers, and we also got an update from Matthew Strickler, the Secretary of Natural Resources, who was really happy to shake my hand, and I thanked him for the $500,000 grant that he is giving to Buchanan Creek to do the investigation of what might be going on in Buchanan Creek. This was an essential meeting. It lasted one hour and 15 minutes. I was there, and I had to represent myself because you all didn't have someone you had selected who could represent me. So it can be improved, and I would really like to try district representation because I feel that I get the most representation and the most help when I reach out either to Councilmember Moss or Councilwoman Abbott. They are not my representatives. You are Mayor Jones, and when I email you, I usually get a form letter that everybody else who emails you get. So I really am looking forward to getting district voting, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Diana Howard. And after Mrs. Howard will be Virginia Wasserberg.
Good evening, everybody. Well, there's a lot to be said for district voting, and there are some, you know, disadvantages to it as well, but it shouldn't be you that decide whether we have district voting or not. It should be us, the citizens. So I think we should have the referendum and let us decide. But it won't solve the underlying problem here, and that problem is special interests. It won't stop all the big money from funding the campaigns. It won't stop the other cities and states and stuff like that from pouring money into our elections. In fact, Norfolk just held a fundraiser for Mary Old candidate Ben Davenport. So who is going to get our attention? I mean, are you going to be, you know, beholden to these special interests to Norfolk? Are you going to be, you know, listening to us? Is it going to be those couple-of-thousand-dollar, you know, voters that give you that money, or is it going to be us? I think when you're getting all this money, $200,000 in special interests, you're going to be listening to them and not us. And that's why the citizens want district voting, because they don't feel represented. They feel they come here, and you don't listen to us, and we're talking to the air.
Virginia Wasserberg. And after Ms. Wasserberg will be Mike Muskel.
Good evening again. I don't have a three-minute elevator speech prepared for this. I'm just going to talk off the cuff about it. I've lived in Virginia Beach for, I think it's just over four years, and I hail from Elizabeth City, North Carolina, where we have district voting, and I am in favor of that here in Virginia Beach as well. My council member, I live in Rose Hall. She's not with us this evening, and she makes herself available to me, and I'm very grateful for that. But she also has to be available for everyone in this city, the 449,000 other people who live here. And that takes up a great deal amount of her time, and I'm sure it takes up a great deal amount of all of your time, too. And I just kind of feel like you could be a little more engaged with the people that you represent if you didn't have to respond to all the rest of us. I feel like you could really attack the issues that we have facing us a little more head-on if you didn't have to be bothered, Ms. Henley, with somebody from Rose Hall and have to meet, you know, what it is that I wish to have, because people in Princess Anne District, they have a lot of needs, just like all of the districts do. We have three at-large candidates. Why do we need 11? I really don't understand that. It hasn't been explained to me as to why we vote for everyone, and I can tell you this much, it is very confusing when you go to the ballot. It's so confusing that I have people ask me all the time, "Please tell me who to vote for." And while there may be a few of you up here that would like for me to do that, there's probably a good deal amount of you who don't want me telling people who to vote for. And I really don't like having to do that because I want people to do their own research, do their own work. And if they only had, you know, three at-large members and then one district representative to study, then maybe they wouldn't need someone like me to tell them. Maybe they could just read it in the newspaper about what one of you say about your district, or maybe they could sit down one-on-one with you, and maybe you would have the time to do that with them. You're not paid full-time for your jobs, and you shouldn't, here on this council, and you shouldn't have a job that represents that as a full-time job. So if you want to represent all the districts, then perhaps you should do so full-time, and we need to look into paying you full-time for that. I'm in favor of this change to our charter, and I ask that you represent it and vote for it. Thank you.
Good evening again. This is another issue that goes to the core of our democracy and what it means to be represented in our government. And just like with the issuance of debt, the system that we have is circumventing the need to hear the people's voice. But in this case, city council is avoiding hearing our voices by But in this case, uh, city council is, uh, avoiding, uh, hearing our voices by drowning them in a sea of voices. Right now, for every single member of city council, everyone's vote is just one out of hundreds of thousands. For at least their own district, it should be one out of tens of thousands, about 10 times more powerful. Now, I can mathematically show, I won't do it here because I only have three minutes and no whiteboard, but it's not hard math, that you have more voting power if you have one council member that you're worth 10 times as much to, and then you still have four members, the mayor and four at-large members, that you're still worth one out of hundreds of thousands for. But under this system, all of our votes are so weak that even if we have a community or a neighborhood that is very organized or motivated because of something that's wrong in their community, they can't necessarily get the attention of city council, or even one voice on city council, because a population that makes up, say, 15% of a district and could sway that election only makes up maybe 1.5% of the whole city, and a city council member can just ignore an entire community in their district because they can get the votes elsewhere. So we should move to district voting, because this is the way that we empower people, uh, that we empower the voters, that we get a voice on city council, and that's how you get a city council that's responsive to issues like flooding and that hears what the residents of the city want when it comes to things like issuing debt. So I urge the city council to, uh, vote for, uh, this resolution and to send the amendment up to the General Assembly. Thank you.
Those are all the speakers I have registered, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I can, um, address a couple of things. One, somebody asked where Council Lady Wilson and, um, Kane are. They're at the Virginia Municipal League Conference. I think that's important. Also, uh, to correct something, I'm not appointed by this council to the, uh, to the Joint Subcommittee on Coastal Flooding. I'm appointed by the Senate of Virginia, and if you want to take a look at these dates, which is very kind of you to provide these, because I could show you exactly every one of these, out of four, the five were, um, council conflicts, council meetings, or, or other things like that, doing my, my, my main job here. And, um, I am not on the, on the list currently, so I was not invited to the meeting yesterday, but they did have my name tagged there, which was nice, but I understand they're fixing that. So just, just to get that information out there.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I notice that, uh, we have some scouts here in the audience, and, uh, I would like for them to come forward, if they would, please, with their scoutmaster.
It's a big troop, too. They're at, um, St. Aden's. I'm back there in Chadaville. I love scouts.
That's at the end of the meeting. It's not happened yet. You needed one on that one. I'll have to do.
As you kind of stay in line there, if you, each one of you would step up to the mic and identify yourself for us, we'd appreciate it.[804.13][804.13](Laughter).
My name is Amra Mon. I go to Lynn Haven Middle School, and I'm 13. I'm in eighth grade.
Thank you for being here.
I'm Kaiton Maher, and I go to Plaza Middle School.
I'm William Wagner, and I go to St. Gregory's, the Great Catholic School.
I'm Caleb Kanonica, and I go to Independence Middle School.
First group.
I'm David Durver, and I go to Old Donation School.
Hello, I am Martin, and I go to Independence Middle School.
I am Eden Suboi, and I go to Lynn Haven Middle School.
Um, I am Alex Mandrinus, and I go to Plaza Middle School.
I'm Caleb Maloney, and I go to Lanstown Middle School.
I'm Ryan Ad, I go to Plaza Middle School.
I'm Joseph Skidmore, and I go to Plaza Middle School.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Victor Phillips, I'm one of the assistant scoutmasters. I want to say thank you for giving that opportunity.
Before you leave, if the young men will come, come forward, I want to give them a pen, that they can wear on their uniform.
I hope you're not gonna come up and talk.
That's great.
Come on this way.
There's the senior patrol leader right there. Are you working on your citizenship in the nation badge or communications?
What, what troop are you on?
Oh, all right.
And thanks to the scoutmasters for bringing the, uh, these scouts here to, uh, join with us and see what happens in, uh, at their local government. All right. We will now go to ordinances and resolutions, and, uh, Mr. Wood, would you do the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, move for approval on the consent agenda. Item J.2, ordinance to amend the City Code, Section 17-3, Ray Public Library Board and Terms and Limitations. J.4, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a revised agreement regarding the city and sister cities association of Virginia Beach regarding responsibility as obligation. J.5, ordinance to establish Capital Improvement Project 2-159, Parliament Drive Sidewalk Phase II, and accept and appropriate federal pass-through funding from VDOT to Capital Projects 2-11, 4-064, and 2-159, and to transfer funds from Capital Project 2-11 to Capital Project 2-159. J.6, ordinance to carry forward and appropriate $1,681,238 in various departments regarding previously approved funds from the fiscal year 2017-2018 operating budget. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there discussion, Mr. Moss?
I just want to mention, I will be abstaining on item three for the reason that the fellow code was, um... Oh, I'm sorry.
That's not on.
That's not on. Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Oh, that's why Barbara did say she wanted to speak on item one.
All right. Motion's been made, second to approve the consent agenda.
We are deferring item, that item, right.
That's not on either. That's been pulled.
I was asking the paper, I couldn't hear.
We, we had some speakers sign up late.
Oh, sorry.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
All right. Now we will go to item J.1, uh, which is the, uh, resolution to adopt the city's 2019 legislative agenda.
Barbara Messner.
I just signed up over.
J.1, it, it...
I was signed up on I also.
Very spoke on all those.
We're just calling for J.1 right now.
Um, if I do seven, on VDOT CIP 2-0026...
Did you want to speak on J.1?
I had the email saying you wanted to speak on J.1.
Okay, I'm gonna pass on that one, but I just wanted to make sure that you...
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
I move that the...
Can I finish, please? I was asking you a question.
No. No. Are there any other speakers?
No, there are no speakers.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, move for, under, uh, item J.1, resolution to adopt city's 2019 legislative agenda, be deferred to October 16th, 2018. I think we should explain the reason for the public, because of both Councilwoman Henley, excuse me, Henley, Wilson and Mrs. Kane are out in national legal cities, and we want to make sure that all the council members were here when we voted, and that's why we're deferring the item at their request.
Very well. All right, the vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have deferred the legislative agenda to October the 16th.
Next item is item J.3, which is ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a long-term ground lease up to 25 years for a portion of city property at 1952 Maple Shade Drive to Selco Partnership, uh, doing businesses Verizon Wireless, Ray Maintaining and Operating Wireless Telecommunication Facilities.
Barbara Messner.
I would like to be able to ask, uh, questions. Um, is it I.7 that I signed up for on the CIP on the road, on the road paving? Has that one been voted on? Because that's what I signed up, okay. That's what I wanted to ask, because this is J., so, you know, it seems like things go out of sequence. I've already spoken on the lease and the issues, so I want to, you know, continue to ask, um, like you deferred something for two people who weren't here, they chose something else instead, uh, that this be deferred, because there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of public safety, uh, concerns about these cell towers, and I didn't have a chance to print out those and put them on the agenda, so I'd like to ask that that lease be deferred for, um, for 30 to 60 days until, um, the different people who live there, we can all get together and discuss this and go over the, the legal ramifications. Is that possible? Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
The next... Yes, one more. Steven Romine.
Evening, Mayor Jones, uh, member of council. For the record, Steve Romine, uh, local attorney, uh, office 999 Waterside Drive, uh, 23510. I'm here tonight on behalf of Verizon Wireless, Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless. Uh, this is a, uh, lease that was put out for bid. We've entered a bid, uh, per the terms that are in the record. Uh, we do not want a deferral. Uh, we'd like this to be acted on tonight, and we think it's a reasonable offer and a reasonable provision. In fact, this, uh, site has been used as a cell tower in the past. It was just abandoned by a previous user, and we're utilizing an existing facility. We're gonna co-locate on our Dominion Power pole. Uh, we are ground leasing some space, 25 feet by 35 feet from the city on the ground, so I think the, the rent and the escalator is a reasonable amount of consideration. So I'd ask that you approve this matter tonight, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you, sir.
That's all the speakers.
All right, may I have a motion?
So move.
Move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, the vote is open.
By a vote of seven to zero, with Mr. Moss abstaining, you have approved the ordinance.
I'd like to explain, Max.
Yes, please.
And I would like the city attorney, if you would, uh, retroactively prepare a letter that could be entered into the amended minutes at our next meeting. I receive more than $5,000 of income in a year from Dominion Resources from stock. The underlying applicant here is getting a relationship with Dominion Resources to be on their poll. I don't know what the nature of that financial transaction is, but to the benefit of the doubt, I'm abstaining.
All right. Next item is item J.7, which is an ordinance to accept and appropriate $1 million from a Virginia Department of Transportation, Ray Capital Project 2-026, Street Reconstruction 2 for road paving projects. Madam Clerk.
Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Mr. Wood. Be nice during the meetings if y'all would stay off your cell phones, your notes, et cetera, like you do in the informals. Show us a little respect, the few opportunities we have to be here. Uh, Mr. Moss, I appreciate your bringing up, um, the reason that you abstained, and according to your statement of economic interest, which you're well aware of, and this includes all of them, the people who have, um, you know, other jobs, like with the Department of Defense, that's not included in your statement of economic interest, and I believe the Dominion was up to 250,000, and that was in 2014, and this goes back to the, um, you know, the process of our elections. The incumbents do not have to update their statement of economic interest, only the new, uh, challengers. That is, that is not fair. It's the type of members and people on council that have, it's not just the system. It's, it's who's here and who's entrenched. As far as the 1 million from VDOT for the road paving, um, I have to do Google search, so I'm not sure if this is still, uh, current, but I think it was last year. It appears that of that 1,250,000 is for the Atlantic Avenue realignment and some last-in-road projects. I'm not sure where, where those battles are, and people are, are fighting most of those. As far as paving, my God, how many times have y'all, um, repaved Pacific Avenue, and it's still a bumpy mess, and it's because of the flooding? The storm drains. Sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Henley. I'm still speaking. Um, I, I'm sorry, it's difficult to come here. I've been coming here 20 years, and, you know, things have only gotten worse. It's been over 22 years since Oceana Boulevard has been repaved, kind of resurfaced and cover up those squiggly lines. That road is a mess. Uh, traffic is gridlocked. Oceana and General Booth, uh, we need to reopen Sukura and Eaglewood. I've already brought that to your attention, Ms., uh, Ms. Henley. And there's, there's too many projects. It doesn't matter how many people you have, there's too many projects. You need to slow down all the projects. Thank you.
Well, since you asked me, I was just looking at this to see exactly what was covered. This is to cover Virginia Beach Boulevard, uh, eastbound Northridge to Aragona, Av. Newt Boulevard, westbound, Aragona to Northridge. They are the two, is that correct, Mr. Hanson?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's been changed since the, I think it was 2017, the one that I looked up.
That's what this agenda item is describing.
Right. And it would be so easy if everyone here had an active, um, Facebook page, so we could ask questions. Mr. Moss, you blocked yours when I asked questions, uh, about the arena, Ms. Abbott in 2017, so a lot of these items, the full agenda isn't even printed until, um, until the last minute, so we don't have a chance to call in and ask y'all questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Mr. Moss.
I just want to make one comment, is that every council member, myself included, files an annual economic disclosure statement with the city clerk, and if you stop by her office, I'm sure she'd provide, provide you a copy, and if not, I'll give you your email, I'll email it to my, myself. I have, uh, full disclosure, and it's updated every year.
All right. Any, uh, any further speakers?
No, sir.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, the vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the ordinance.
The next item is, uh, item J.8, which is a resolution to authorize a grant of $5,000 to Philfest USA Inc. for the Fourth Annual Philfest USA. Are there any speakers?
Barbara Messner.
This brings up the, something I've talked about for 20 years, due process. I'm the one that asked your predecessors for to have our council meetings at 2:00 in the afternoon instead of, I mean, at 6:00 instead of 2:00. There isn't enough time for us to, uh, go over all of these things. Amanda, would you remind me of the, the item? I'm, I'm so frustrated.
This is the add-on item.
Oh, the add-on, yes, 5,000. Yes, the due process. Uh, how can you add on something that wasn't advertised and vote on it? It's supposed to be advertised two weeks in advance. This is $5,000 taxpayer money for a festival. Uh, it's non-stop festival. The city's website is a, a rolling advertisement for, um, for the air show, Oceana's air show, and now it's for, um, you want people to come pay money to look at the sandcastles. So I would like to have the full agenda printed when y'all receive it on Friday, to have it posted online, so people can look at it. Uh, I oppose 5,000 for another festival. The city is doing festivals non-stop every weekend. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Not, there are no other speakers signed up, sir.
May I have a... May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the ordinance regarding Philam Fest.
Thank you. There are no appointments this evening. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? I will therefore adjourn the formal meeting, and once the media is turned off, we'll have the open mic.